It's six o'clock, um, the call to meetings have ordered, um, because you will call.
John Hardy.
Here.
The Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Golf.
Here.
Vicana Norton.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant. Michael Bush. Arnold Truitt. Troy Barrett.
All right, we have forum tonight, um, a little different since we have to do the election of president. So open standing motion.
I nominate Linda.
What's that for them?
I have a, uh, motion nominate Linda Barnhart as president from Eric Golf and a second from Tim Lewis. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
As I was all ready. All right, so it's unanimous. Uh, Linda will be playing for the president yet again. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, thank you for your road of confidence. Um, then the next item on the agenda will be election of vice president. Do you have a nomination from the floor for vice president?
Nominate Tim Lewis.
Second.
Motion made by Vicana Norton to nominate Tim Lewis for vice president, second by Eric Golf. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have some phone ins this evening, so there's a little delay. How about phone in people? Are you voting yes or are you holding all?
This is just. Appreciate.
Okay, the motion is unanimous. Thank you, good luck.
Every meeting.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
All right, motion by Mr. Golf to approve the agenda as submitted. Second by Ms. Norton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, uh, with our delay, I think that's Mr. Hardy and he, you mean aye, right?
I'm sorry, Linda, I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you.
I don't know what to tell you. I'll scoot over. We're voting for the approval of the agenda as submitted. I have ayes on everyone.
Yes, aye.
Okay, all right, the agenda is approved as submitted. Next we have.
That's much better, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess they moved the apparatus closer to me. Sunshine Law speakers, do we have anyone to speak under the sunshine law regarding any project other than what's on public hearing? Let the record show that there's none to speak under the open governmental. Approval of the meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Golf to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
As submitted, second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I think it's unanimous. Public hearings, we have five public hearings this evening, Hedgesville Family Medicine.
The, uh, first public hearing tonight is a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Hedgesville Family Medicine filed 2405-130. The developers East Mountain Health Advantage and the engineers Monteverde Engineering and Design Studio. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Tax Map 22, Parcel 51. The site's located at the southwest corner of Hedgesville Road and Parrot's Road, approximately eighty feet south from the intersection of Roaring Lion Drive and Hedgesville Road. It's, uh, where the empty BBNT bank is currently. The developers proposing a 5,915 square foot medical center with parking on 1.45 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On December 2nd, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Hedgesville Family Medicine?
Good evening, Seth Roderick with Monteverde Engineering and Design Studio.
Okay.
The engineer for the project representing you. And happy to answer any questions. It is pretty straightforward. Project redevelopment of the existing BBNT site, small addition on the backside where the existing drive through lanes are now. Those will get torn down and there's a small addition creating a total of about 6,000 square feet. Uh, family medical practice, it's a lower traffic generator than the existing. Uh, we're utilizing existing, um, but modifying existing stormwater structure, uh, that's on site. There's an existing ponds being upgraded to buyer retention. So there's a lot of improvements on the site, normal beautification, landscaping, et cetera. Any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, now's your opportunity to make those known. We would ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
There are no comments, I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no one from the public that wishes to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Golf, second by Ms. Norton to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions, uh, of Mr. Roderick or of the staff?
There are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Golf to accept staff recommendation. And that is to advance the project forward to this preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any questions? Motion passes. Thank you. The next project is Dupont Road Substation.
This public hearing is a request for concept plan approval. The project is Dupont Road Substation filed 2411-352. The developers First Energy Corporation and the engineers Kleinfelder, Inc. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 14, Parcel 44, and is located on Dupont Road, approximately 0.35 miles southeast from its intersection with Williamsport Pike. This project proposes the construction of a new electrical substation on 1.4 acres. Water and sewer utilities are not proposed for the site. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On December 2nd, 2024, county engineer Doug Smith deemed the above mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent Dupont Road Substation?
Evening, Josh Krebs with Kleinfelder. Uh, happy to answer any questions or address any questions.
Again, this is a public hearing for Dupont Road Substation. Questions or comments at this time, please?
If there are no comments, I move to close public hearing.
Second. Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public regarding Dupont Substation. I have a motion by Mr. Golf, second by Ms. Norton to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr., Mr. Hardy, are you there?
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? All right, the motion passes. The next public hearing.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Uh, planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions or comments?
There are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for the concept plan to the detailed plans.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Golf to accept staff recommendation and that is to advance the concept plan to a detailed site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you. The next is Forbes Dental.
Yeah, this, uh, public hearing is a request for waiver. The project is Forbes Dental filed 2412-368 tied to 2412-367. The developers Davano Forbes and the engineers Foxen Associates. It's located in the Hedgesville District, Tax Map 41, Parcel 45.3. The site's located on the north side of Tavern Road, approximately 0.2 miles east of Rock Cliff Drive. The developers proposing a 168 square foot addition to the existing building for the purpose of a dental office. This site is currently served by public water and sewer. The developers requesting the following waivers to the 2024 subdivision and land use ordinance. One, reduce the required 50-foot fr- front setback to 33 feet. Two, reduce the required drive aisle width from 24 feet to 20 feet on the east side of the existing building. And three, reduce the parking setback from eight to two on the west side of the property and zero foot on the east side of the property. The proposed site is an existing structure with setbacks that are consistent with adjacent properties along Tavern Road. The proposed 33-foot front setback would still provide enough area for a highway reserve dedication of five feet along the front property line, which would allow for future roadway widening from 40 feet to 50 feet. Based on the information provided above, staff recommends approval of the waiver to section 504, Table 5-2, contingent on the following. That the front driveway apron and improvements should be set back eight feet from the highway reserve dedication along the site's front property line. And two, that all signage should be a minimum of eight feet from the edge of the highway reserve dedication. Do you want to do each individual?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
You want me to read all of it first?
Read it on, because it's a public hearing, we'll take the questions.
As stated previously. Oh, I missed one, hold on. Stated previously, the structure and conditions preexist county regulations. Currently, there's a 20-foot wide drive aisle between the structure and the eastern property line. The National Fire Protection Association requires a minimum of 20-foot clearance for fire apparatus. Staff recommends approval of the waiver to Article 8, Table 8-1B, contingent on the drive aisle being 20 feet wide and clear of any building overhangs or appendages. The site parcel is 70 feet wide and the subdivision and land use ordinance requires 60 feet of paving width for 90-degree two-way parking areas. A five-foot sidewalk is also required for ADA accessibility from the parking lot to the structure. Only a 2.5-foot parking setback can be provided along the west property line and no parking setback can be provided along the east part property line in order to comply with NFPA regulations. Staff recommends approval of the waiver to section 801.6.2 to allow for the parking setback reductions excluding the approval from the front driveway apron and parking entrance along Tavern Road.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Clint Rock with Foxen Associates.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, your opportunity to make your questions and comments known. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have at this time.
There is no one, I move to close public hearing.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Golf, second by Ms. Norton, close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the staff? It's a rather lengthy staff recommendation, so, um.
I will add that all these conditions are just. Way it is because of the structure and.
Yeah. I'm sorry, you'll have to speak up.
I just have a question like neighbor on either side. Any issues with those outfits, have they been contacted?
So they don't have to go out and contact each property, property owner. I will say that on the side of that site is like the state stadium here. Lot of equipment. Then the other side is a commercial property that's a drive aisle in between.
Yeah, I think it's a dump.
They are, they are pretty much like, as a matter of fact, I think. Whatever you call it, that we did the last time. They actually share a parking lot at the.
But everything on that side is commercial.
It's all commercial, yes.
There's their residential, whatever they are.
Have you had any calls in from the neighbors on the other side of the street? All right, if there's no other questions or comments, um, then I have a motion.
A motion for all, or do you want to do?
I still one at a time.
Okay, I make the motion that we, um, grant the exception for to reduce the required 50-foot front setback to 33, which is section 504, Table 5-.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Golf for, um, number one, and that is to reduce the 50-foot setback to 33 feet. Any questions from planning commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on item number one. Okay, we're ready for item number two.
Make the motion, we grant the exemption for, for number two to reduce the required drive aisle from 25, 24 foot to 20 feet. As long as we're maintaining the, uh, Fire Protection Association requirements of 20 feet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Golf to accept staff recommendation on item number two, and that is to grant the drive aisle from 24 to 20 feet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
I will make a motion on number three to grant the waiver for parking setback from eight feet to two feet on the west side of the property and zero feet on the east.
Second.
Okay, again, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Golf to reduce the setback from eight foot to two feet on the west side property and zero on the east side. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any questions? Motion passes, thank you. Good to see that building having some, um, form of usage. Sitting, I think, for a few years. Okay, the next project for public hearing is Mills Meadows.
Yes, there's a typo in the staff recommendation, it refers to a one-year request. Um, the developer is requesting a two-year, um, extension and we will amend it for the record.
Okay.
This is for, excuse me, a request for consideration, Mills Meadows filed 2412-374. The developer is Mills Meadows Development LLC. The engineer is Greenway Engineering Incorporated. It's located in the Ardent Tax District, Map 19, Parcel 3 and 3.4. The property is located on near Bethel's Way, approximately half a mile northeast from its intersection with Naden Bush Lane. The project proposes 99 residential lots on approximately 17.12 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developer is requesting a two-year extension, which would extend the preliminary plan approval until February 16th, 2027. On February 5th, 2024, the planning commission granted the developer a one-year preliminary plan extension to February 16th, 2025. The developer is requesting a two-year extension of the preliminary plan for the second time. The developer has provided a contract attached that will be executed with the purchaser if the extension is granted. This project was approved under the 2009 subdivision ordinance and 2016 stormwater management ordinance. There would be, excuse me, there would not be any major improvements to the project if it were to be resubmitted under the current 2024 subdivision and land use ordinance and 2023 stormwater management ordinance. Based on the information provided, staff recommends approval of a one-year preliminary plan extension to February 16th, 2026.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent, uh, the Mills Meadows?
Good evening, Kenneth Miller with Mills Meadows Partner.
Okay, thank you.
And I will just add, that report talks about contract being executed. Just sent me a contract today, so that's what.
Yeah. Planning Commission members, uh, well, this is a public hearing, so do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak regarding this project? Please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Brandy Hogan, I live in, um, Mills Farm on 99 Lucetano Lane. Um, I'm questioning yet another extension by this project. Every time we turn around, it's, we need a waiver, we need an extension. You were granted one year because you needed to make the sale. You made the sale, now you want a two-year, even though last year you were told no two-year. So I'm kind of questioning why the constant extensions, um, in order to make the deal. I understand during the last meeting, they were unable to get, or were having difficulty finding a local partner and we're looking nationwide. Again, you were already told you're not getting a two-year. We granted a one-year and to get everything together, and now the two-year's back on the table. This impacts my neighborhood because that road realistically cannot take it. I understand you're gonna build, fine, I get that. But there's also been no road study, which, um, the committee had asked that to be done. And they would only do it if they were granted permission for their last waiver to move from 99 homes to, I believe, 120. My question is, why are we wasting the committee and taxpayers' time continuously doing extensions when you've already been told you're not getting that just to come back a year later and go, pretty pleased, can we have it now?
Anyone else wish to speak regarding this project before we answer any questions?
I will explain about the two-year extension versus the one-year. So their last extension request was under the 2009 subdivision ordinance, which stated you could only ask for one-year extensions. So they previously asked for a three-year extension, which they were told you're only allowed to ask for a one-year extension. The ordinance now, in the 2024, um, land use ordinance, it states that it's negotiated between staff. Um, they asked for a two-year extension, so we are recommending approval of a one-year extension based on their contract that's signed with the builder. We feel that there shouldn't be any problem having a final plat- approved and recorded within that year time, which would invest the project. Um, but that's just where the two-year came from. I just wanted to clarify that.
You may have to speak up because I'm not sure anybody can hear you in the back.
They go to submit the final plot, they will have to update all their permits.
Okay.
So all their permits that they needed for this, they all will have to be updated. So at that time, if the entrance isn't constructed and their MM19 from DOH is, isn't done and it's out of date, they'll have to go back and see DOH and they could require them to do another traffic study.
You hear?
Traffic impact study was never done. Do we require it because it was in a hot town home community? If they were able to get the waiver, which was designed by the planning committee. Prove that DOH would require a traffic impact study, which they never had to do. But DOH could say, hey, now we want a traffic impact study for the 99 lots. That's completely on the developer and the purchaser. And I'm, they're very aware of that situation. Like, everything's gonna have to be brought back into current permitting.
Do you want to?
Yeah, the, the request for this one-year extension is just so that the purchaser can move forward with getting the final plot approval. They are aware of all the road studies and any impacts of new permits and anything like that that might be required. So the reason for this extension is with the ratified contract for them to move forward to get final plot approval.
Do you understand all that? Okay. Um, and there is a contract here, if you care to read through it. I have two. It's rather lengthy.
I'm sorry, I got time.
Okay. Okay, planning commission members, do you have, uh, well, let's close the public hearing. Is there, no one else wishes to speak regarding this project?
There is no one else, move to close public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Golf. Second by Ms. Norton to close public hearing. I'm hearing some noise in the background, Mr. Hardy, is that, are you saying something or?
No, that wasn't me, I don't believe.
Okay, Mr. Bush, are you in the background?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, I can. Mr. Bush, are you still there?
I'm here.
Okay, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, all right. All right.
Vote to close the public hearing.
Excuse me?
Need to vote to close the public.
That's what I'm doing. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Golf, second by Ms. Norton to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think I hear ayes.
Aye.
From Mr. Hardy and Mr. Bush. And that means the public hearing is now closed. Okay, planning commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of the staff or of, um, the applicant's representative? If not, can I have a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for approval of a one-year preliminary plan extension to February 16th, 2026.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Golf to approve a one-year extension to Mills Meadows. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the motion carries. When we have a, uh, call-in like this, there's a lot of delay. I hope you understand that, um, we are having participation. It just takes a while for the planning commission members to get everything through. I'm sure that has something to do with Frontier, right? Okay, um, the next public hearing is Frank Family Apartments.
Yes, this is a request, um, for concept plan advancement. Um, the project is Frank Family Apartments, the file number is 2411-345. I apologize in advance for this name. Um, I choose to not want to pronounce some of these letters, um, of Panyuka LLC, the engineer's FSA. I welcome any correction. Um, it's located in Falling Waters District.
It's located in Falling Waters District, MAP 17, Parcel 1. The project is located at 4159 Williams Port Pike. The project proposes two multifamily buildings, the first building to contain 36 units, the second building to contain 24 units on 2.73 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. December 19th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2024. The concept plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance 2024. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the concept plan to the detailed site plan stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, good evening. Trevor Frederick, engineer FSA, representing the applicant.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Your opportunity to make your questions or comments known at this time. Sir, please come forward, give us your name, address, and any comments you might have.
Michael Gay, 217 Shooting Star Lane. I live off of Beddington Road. My only concern is the impact at the traffic light at Beddington Crossroads store. We currently have 99 townhouses getting ready to be constructed on Beddington Road, another 29 single-family units at Davis Drive. We have the steel mill plant in the old DuPont property, which is exiting tractor and trailer trucks all the time, plus farm equipment on that road. Without a delayed green light or a different ingress egress for this project, you can't get through the light now with the light changes three times when you're making a left turn either way, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak regarding the Frank Family Apartments?
There is no one else. I move to close the public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no one else to speak. I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone opposed to closing the public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Frederick, do you have anything you'd like to address regarding Mr. Gay's concerns?
Yes, we did consult with the DOH folks on this project. We sent them the concept plan. In lieu of asking for a full traffic impact study, they did request that we construct and install a dedicated left-turn lane on Nyapetown Road where it intersects with US-11. So that's the improvements that DOH required for this project to alleviate the traffic concern.
Mr. Gay, did you hear that?
Yep.
Okay. Planning Commission members, you have any questions?
Before I make a motion, I just wanna make sure that we...
Madam President, this is Mike Bush.
Let the record show that Mr. Bush is speaking regarding Frank Family Apartments. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just, by way of a comment, I wanted to express appreciation for the Board of Education being involved in the planning process, and one thing that may be helpful to the extent anybody follows up on this minute are, it seems that those schools referenced are at capacity with or without this project. And what would be helpful in that analysis, in explanation of what the Board of Education is doing and plans to do regarding those capacity issues, it just doesn't seem enough to say we're at capacity, we need to stop developing, but it would be helpful to say in the next three to five years, we can increase capacity by this many students or this many staff. So just to comment to express appreciation for, but some more information would also be helpful as to what they're planning to do to address the issues referenced, almost regardless of this project.
Okay. We did have a meeting with the Board of Education, Dr. Sacks and the three or four board members, about, what, maybe a month ago?
A month.
Yeah, month, month and a half ago. They never were very forthcoming with what their plans might be to accept additional students in any of the areas that would be at capacity. So should, does the Planning Commission want to follow up with a letter to Dr. Sacks regarding any kind of plans to make the schools so that they're not at 100% and 112% utilized?
Just echo what Mr. Bush stated. We should respond back to Berkeley County Schools and Dr. Sacks and thank them for their letter and the points that they pointed out, but to say, in the future, we would also like for the school board to say what they have planned to address their needs for more schools or to large schools, that that's not the Planning Commission's responsibility, that is on the school board. We had a bunch of them in here a couple of months ago with the project. They wanna point fingers, but they don't wanna take responsibility. And I think we just need to go back and say, hey, thanks for the information, really appreciate it. Can you share with us what the school board's project plans are for the next three to five years, so we have an idea when we're looking at projects, what the school boards are thinking?
You wanna put that in a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
All right, I appreciate that. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis. I need a second from the Planning Commission. Second by Mr. Goff. Laura, will you please draft a letter to Dr. Sacks?
Do you want this broad or do you want this specific?
I think broad.
Okay.
That if you, this project and future projects, it would help if the school board shared with the Planning Commission and to the residents of the county what their plans are for handling overcapacity or future...
I will draft the letter. If there's a conflict with that, then...
Okay. Mr. Bush, do you hear that? Mr. Bush, hello?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you cut out there.
I said, what Mr. Lewis is suggesting, that we send a letter to Dr. Sacks?
Yeah.
Okay, and the board, asking for them to share with us any plans for additional enrollment utilization for different areas, not just this project, but for other areas.
Right, agreed, 100%.
You're going with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis to send a letter to the school board, thanking them for their input on this particular project, and asking that they be forthcoming with additional information regarding utilization of additional schools and the overcapacity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Now, we need a motion to approve the project.
I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for advancement of the concept plan, as a detailed site plan.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to move the project forward to the detailed site plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearings. The next project is Sader Residential Development, and it's a final plat determination.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Sader Residential Development, Section 1, lots 1 through 11, 17 through 44, and 97 through 138. The file number is 2409-280. The developer is ILA Properties. The engineer is Sheet Road Engineering. It's located in the Mill Creek District, MAP 6, Parcel 16. This site is located off Sader Drive, near the intersection of Winchester Avenue and Jaredstown Road. This final plat proposes 81 single-family attached lots on 17.9 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the May 16th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted waivers to Section 802.1.A.I., prohibiting a right-of-way from being in a buffer area, and Section 802.A.B.B.I.A., requiring a 25-foot buffer with screening between residential and commercial use. On October 23rd, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith found the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance 2009. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance 2009. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the February 18th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent Sader Residential Development?
Mike Roberts, Representative Project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Planning Commission members, excuse me, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff? There are no questions, I'm ready for a motion.
I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the February 18th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion, excuse me, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on February 18th, at which time the final plat will be considered for final plat approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the major portion of our business. The other thing we have is a comprehensive plan update. Laura, do you want to take over there?
Yeah.
Sure.
So tonight's the public hearing, so I would just ask that anybody that had any comments that they wanted to read into the record, they're welcome to share it. I didn't prepare a staff report, but, you know, we've been over this a few times with the updates and changes to Chapter 3 and Chapter 5A that can allow us to kind of move forward for the county commission's purposes. And we started, I wanna say two weeks ago, Brian and I had a kickoff meeting with the Berkeley Group, and we're gonna start on a full-blown update. You guys have a timeline in front of you, so you see how long, you know, we have that projected out till, till the end of 2026. So we look for you guys to be involved with that for the major update. But again, this is merely an update for Chapter 3 and Chapter 5A for the purposes of the planning, or the county commission.
Okay, Planning Commission members, do you have questions regarding this project timeline meeting schedule?
Madam President, this is John Hardy. Could I chime in just for a second?
Absolutely.
Yeah, first, let me apologize for not being there this evening. I'm a little under the weather. You guys probably did not want me to be there. But I do have questions on the updates for this, the plan that we're working on. Are we trying to update the, are we working on the section that will be affected for the impact fees?
The answer that I'm seeing from your staff is yes, but Laura's gonna come forward and address this.
Correct. The purpose of this update...
Because I think it's key...
Wait a minute, John.
I'm sorry, let Laura talk.
Yeah, sorry, the purpose of this update is to come into compliance with the legislation that was passed to allow counties and jurisdictions without zoning to enact impact fees. You know, previously, that clause stated that you had to have zoning, and you had to have a comprehensive plan that was updated every 10 years. So now the legislation states that you have to have a comprehensive plan that's updated at least every five years, along with those other items that are already in Section 8A. But this is merely just to come into compliance with that legislation for the county commission.
Can you hear that, Mr. Hardy?
If you could reiterate what she said, I could just barely hear her, I'm sorry.
She says that this is an update to the planning, to the comprehensive plan, based on the fact that there needs to be a comprehensive plan update every five years as opposed to every 10 years, and that the county commission can then enforce a impact fee without zoning.
So what she is saying is that we have to update the entire comprehensive plan, or can we just update the section that deals with, and I'm not sure if there's a single section that deals with impact fees, or does that mean that we have to update the entire comprehensive?
So that might be more of a legal question, but I will tell you that only Chapter 3 and 5A were updated. Chapter 3 has the demographics for the county based on the 2020 census information, and then Chapter 5A discusses impact fees at the end of that chapter. But in terms of updating the full comprehensive plan versus chapters, that's not really something I could answer.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, I think the county commissions...
Mr. Hardy, I think we have legal counsel who wants to take the role right now. I don't know if you can hear him. He may have to come up so that he can...
I can come up here. Commissioner Hardy, yeah, they're correct. The Local Powers Act, which permits the county commission to impose impact fees, requires that a new comprehensive plan be updated every five years. So yes, I mean, it would be a new comprehensive plan, but it doesn't mean you have to change everything in it. You just have to update, and the county commission's done this for a while, you just have to update, you know, the year has to be, it'll say the 2025. Most of what's been proposed right now, it says, still calls it 2016, and it discusses things that are going to happen in 2016, 2017, and it lists the wrong people on the county commission, and calls it the county council, that sort of thing. So those simple things could be updated. There doesn't necessarily have to be anything in there calling for impact fees. It's certainly good to have, but it's, that's part of the code, just requires five years, whereas for other things, such as having a subdivision ordinance, it's every 10 years. And the comprehensive plan, it's, you know, that's, some planning commissions, that's pretty much all they do, they're set up just to do that, whereas other things this body uses, such as subdivision ordinance, doesn't have to come through here for you guys to do any work. The county commission can update that on its own. But this requires the planning commission to actually do the updates. So it's really...
Okay, all right.
Whatever this body wants to do with it.
What was the timeline that Laura said? I'm sorry, I missed that.
I can get you a copy on Thursday or email it to you, John, but they have a project timeline. Our kickoff for the full-blown rewrite started a few weeks ago, and it's projected to go all the way to the end of November in 2026.
All right, well, okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, Mr. Hardy, I realize that you are relatively new to the county commission, and that this has been thrust in your lap as it has... and that this has been thrust in your lap as it has been the rest of the county commission. So I'm sure that you will be able to have dialogue with the other members of the county commission and your county administrator to get any kind of dates and planning so that you know what's going on all the time as a county commissioner.
Yes, thank you very much for that, and you're new to me, and I appreciate everyone's patience, and I'm sorry for not being there tonight, but we'll continue to work through this and we'll get it figured out.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding the public hearing for the comprehensive plan, people that are left here in the room? Okay, let the record show that there's no additional comments from the public regarding the comprehensive plan update. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing on the comprehensive plan update. Second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Bush, are you still with us?
Yes, Madam President, I am.
Okay.
May, I have a comment, if it's at appropriate time.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm in support, as we've discussed in previous meetings, I'm in support of, you know, the comprehensive plan update light as, as we've talked at purpose of merely updating the plan. I said that the county commission has the latitude to, or its impact fee analysis. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would just like to read my comments from prior meeting where I would hope in Berkeley Group to consider the dynamic Berkeley County right now and well into the future so that we may actually have caught out dynamic pockets of growth and pockets of preservation as the county of Berkeley, the residents of Berkeley County would see fit, as well as use the plan with an eye towards strategies that might create greater enforcement mechanisms so that the planning commission might have a goal in addressing the concerns that are often in front of the commission related to highway safety, public safety, educational issues, agricultural preservation, and so that national goals that come out of the, the full comprehensive plan redo would actually provide some more tools in the toolbox to do these things that ask us to do. So, you know, I've, I've gone on longer about that, I'll leave that there in support of the current update for the purpose that it's presented, but also encouraging the Berkeley Group to think more broadly about those issues and, and give us some tools we can use going forward.
Okay. We'll certainly make sure that your language gets put into the minutes. Okay, if that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
If that concludes our meeting this evening, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Do we have to make a vote? Do we have to make a vote to take this to the council?
You either have to, the motion to advance it to the county commission for a third consideration.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whatever you would wish.
I'm sorry, all we did was close the public hearing, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we advance to the county commission the changes to chapter 3 and to chapter 5A that outlines impact fees, and how the county council can move forward with that, and they can go from there.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to advance the changes to section 3 and section 5A onto the county commission for their review and approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This doesn't go over easy, being a, a call in. Okay, I think we've done everything we need to do, so now Mr. Goff.
Now I move to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to adjourn at 6:55. Second, second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.